All right, it's June 6, 2023, 7:30 PM. Going to call the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Members present tonight are myself, John Tehan, Bob Shabbitt, Andy Marco, Doug Roberts, Joseph Ball, and alternate Michael Johansson, who are going to seat for Rebecca Sanoski. And I, no applications for receipt. Brings us to item D, Public Hearing. Item one, Wellington Affordable Housing Plan Listening Session.
So for quite some time now, the commission has been working through the affordable housing plan, which is required by statute eight dash thirty J. We have reviewed a couple of iterations of it. We've kind of talked about some changes and some tweaks that I think at the last meeting prior, I had some notes we think we wanted to change a table we were going to add. And so one of the things we wanted to do before moving forward was to at least provide for a public hearing or public listening session. We did advertise this as we would normally notice it was in the paper, it was online. The plan is online with link to all the information and requesting people either participate or provide comments to us in writing or email.
Did you get anything?
No. We also posted all the survey results. We posted the PowerPoint presentation. The regulatory analysis, basically everything that kind of led us up to that, the P O C D review is all on there. So, you know, the intent was to solicit feedback. Should there be anybody that hasn't?
All right, well. You have two people in the audience here in person tonight. Anybody have any feedback on the affordable housing plan? Do you, Mr. Say your name and where you live if you do.
Matthew Clark, 42 Burbank Road, Long Beach, Connecticut. I read the affordable housing plan. I didn't have a lot to say. I know that we as a town are required to follow certain processes and procedures as specified by the legislature. And I'm also kind of vaguely familiar that we have a lot of low income people living in our town. I think the most telling paragraph for me in that report that I read was, we don't have to do anything and we have a whole bunch of low income people living in our town. So prime equation, if you have low income people living in your town, and why is there a need for more low income housing? They can obviously afford what the housing is available. That seemed apparent there, it doesn't really make much of a difference. We still have things we have to do and we have to go plan and we have to meet the requirements from the state.
The state wants 10%.
State wants 10% and we have, I think, what?
Seven and a half today.
Seven and a half. And how many low income people have housing in?
Well, they, they don't look at it, they look at the housing stock versus the, they don't look by how you're describing it is and how it's accounted for.
Yeah.
I understand what you're trying to say, but that's not how the state looks at it.
The key word is trying to say.
Yeah.
Anyway, so the only other comment or thought I had was that expanding senior low income housing, I don't know if that would meet the state's requirement for providing low income housing within our town.
It does. It does. It just, you know, that's the key, that's the reason for this discussion tonight. You know, we have several options we can pursue to get there. We're just looking to see, you know, how the public felt about whether strongly in favor or opposed. If the ones that hopefully, you know, in the comments, they take the time to reach for that proposal we have to. All right. Thank you. All right, let's go to the, let's go to the online folks. Anybody have any comments they want or anything to say about affordable housing? James Marshall. Want to let him in? James, go ahead.
Sorry, guys, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, excellent. James Marshall, 46 Fisher Hill Road. Just want to say I read the, I think the document, and I don't know whether I read the latest version of it earlier today because I didn't see it posted on the online resources for this meeting. So I don't know if what I read was current, but it seemed like a pretty thorough and comprehensive guiding document. But as is the case with everything, the devil's in the details in the implementation. As you guys worked to pursue, you know, implementing some of the strategies outlined, you know, in the affordable housing plan. You know, it'll be really interesting to see how far each of these elements are pushed. The only item I believe I saw that they did have concerns with potentially was the implementation of, I forget how it was written, I don't have it in front of me, I apologize, but waiving or eliminating minimum frontage or lot requirements in lieu of entirely going with soil capacity testing, which I think there's an approach there. I just hesitate. Again, it's going to be how you implement it. I think it could be beneficial to, you know, look at the specific components of an individual site. And again, dump that onus on the applicant, which is also great, but I think to have it completely open ended. You know, it really should be, again, as is everything here, to leave something completely open ended to soil capacity alone might leave you with unfavorable conditions or unfavorable application scenarios. You don't anticipate that type of development or that type of density. So I don't know, it's good, good job, seems pretty comprehensive. So I look forward to seeing how you guys move forward and implement it. Thank you.
Thanks for your feedback, James. I think we're all set with this one. Anybody from the commission, anything to say, we're the ones that discussed it pretty fairly the last time, so. Okay. All right. Anyone make, I'll make a motion that we close public hearing on Wellington Affordable Housing Plan Listening Session.
Well, second.
All in favor? All right, new business. Item number one, P Z dash twenty-three dash nine, Special Permit Renewal, Section fifteen, excavation, sand and gravel, sixty-six Navarro Road, owner applicant W. Williams. It's the applicant here. Right here. Kind of unmuted. Can you hear us? No. No, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I'm here.
All right, so anything new going on on?
No, it's pretty status quo from really the last time, other than sending back a little bit of scrubs that's growing in around the driveway and that. So we're just here to, you know, renew our, our permit. And again, I've been there probably over 50 years, hate to admit it, but. So I don't know if you have any questions. I mean, we still have it, there's material there, still in hopes to take material and not sure if at some point may build, build a house on that land and. But nothing.
No really. How much material is being taken out currently?
In total?
Oh, this, just an estimate.
Well, since then, really, we haven't taken anything out of there since the last renewal.
Okay. All right, any, any questions? John or Joe, anything?
I'm good.
All right, can we, we will end this one now or should we?
Yeah. So just to clarify, it's a one year, basically.
Yeah, like you do.
There's no hearing, so.
Okay. All right. Anyone make one, make a motion? I'll make a motion to approve P Z dash twenty-three dash nine, Special Permit Renewal, Section fifteen, excavation, sand and gravel, sixty-six Navarro Road, owner applicant W. Williams. All right, in the discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You're all set.
All right, thank you very much, have a good night, thank you.
You as well. All right, item two, informal discussion, nineteen Cemetery Road, Temporary Event.
So I had been talking with this property owner, you probably recall, maybe two, three years ago, you approved a home occupation. It's, it's a property that's kind of off, back from the road. There's like a detached garage, it's kind of up front and she's got a shop in there.
What is the home occupation for?
It's sort of, it sells like crafts or where something she, she makes on the property.
Yeah, I've already offered her a, right down.
Yeah.
And right behind the old simple.
Right. So, so she had reached out to us, basically asking what the process would be or what the thought would be if she wanted to have a couple of other like artisan type vendors there on a Saturday with a table that they could then sell. Not serving food or alcohol or anything like that, but just if she had others there, sort of like a tag sale, but first.
Would this be a recurring event or a one time?
It'd be a one time Saturday. So I had gone back and forth with her and I said, why don't you come? The commission, there's really not a lot mentioned in the regs about this in any way. And from our perspective, a lot of towns will see grant specific permits for these types of things, like legitimate land use approvals, but then they, you can't really grant a permanent land use approval for a temporary event, right? Because you sort of imply a more longstanding approval and what would be intended in that temporary review. So I suggested she come here to present the idea so that we could have some, get some feedback. And so I was expecting her to be here. I'll follow up, the, the event is still a ways off, so I think we have some time, so.
I guess my main question is, are how many people would they anticipate show up? How much traffic?
Right.
Parking cars, that sort of thing.
Right, yeah.
Other than that, I, I oppose to it.
Or if we go through the regular application that we have for that special event.
Well, we'd be issuing it as a special permit. And what that basically means is it would run with the land. And so.
No, we have those, that one time, what's that, that, I can't, can't think what it's called now. When we have that, where you apply if you're having an event at your home and like a wedding or something. What the heck was that, what do we call it? No, I forgot, we have an application for that, we fill it out and it talks about trash disposal, number of people parking.
We have something that works as a, as an accessory event to a farm.
Yeah, correct. Or if we just use that application as a vehicle to gather enough information.
The way that it was written, it only allows those types of events when they are being located on an accessory to a farm. So we'd have to do some type of text amendment.
No, then we want to go that road.
No, we don't want to go that road. So I think we still have some time, so I'll follow up with her and check in and say, okay, why don't you come to the next meeting and we can have that discussion, whether it be something that we do as like an administrative review from the commission, so she presents it, but you give her an approval that isn't a special permit, or we handle it through reviewing at the staff level with fire marshal and with the.
I think our biggest concern would be in mind anyway, that we're not disturbing the neighbors there. There's not cars all over the place.
Right.
We're not, you know, have the road half blocked or anything like that.
Yeah.
That.
Once, once, that's it.
Yeah, one time. Like, it's just like a Saturday, sort of like a little.
Yeah, they have, they have those artists, what are the signs you see around town all the time, the artists?
I think that's coming up.
Yeah, they, you see them, that's one of my artists.
The challenge, they already don't know.
And they're going to show up. Go around to different artists.
I guess more.
Yeah, it'll be a good day.
Right.
Show up, right?
Yeah.
But I think it's each person just to place their own stuff at their own home and you just kind of.
So maybe she can come down and describe what she's.
Yeah, I think if she describes it to you and you're comfortable, then we could do it as an administrative permit, but I want her to present it to you so that I'm not in the middle if there's a problem.
Does that seem reasonable to everybody here?
Yeah, yeah.
Seems reasonable.
Well, we don't know anything about tag sales, all right?
No, why? Some tags, I mean, you have more people than that, so, okay.
I think we have language in the regs about taxes.
Okay.
They're written by Mark Rantz over there.
It's been a long time, actually, for us to have a survey.
That's right, a month with everything else. All right, I'll follow up with her and see if she can come to the next one.
Okay, so. Item three, informal discussion, energy storage project, K C E, C T five LLC, Village Hill Road.
So they're here, I just want to do a little bit of a table setting. So we have been talking with them at the staff level about their project, which I won't get into, they'll explain, but what, they're going to get into the details about how the whole thing will unfold, but my, I suggested that they come here because even though this is ultimately not a project that will come before the commission, I felt it was better that this sort of set the stage for the project and the trajectory of the project, rather than sort of it being found out through other channels and this, we can sort of create a chain of information and you'll have someone can answer questions. So I, they're here because I've asked them to present to you informally.
And we agree that it would be very good for us to introduce this project to the town and then make you all aware of the basics of the project. We are preparing to submit our permanent application to Connecticut Siding Council, and it's much more appropriate that you have some advanced knowledge of the project before it just gets published.
So this is battery storage?
This is for a large battery storage.
We have demand response, because we signed up for it at work, I was getting the, today is a demand response day, they said N L X is the. The other one, we, we do that through where I work.
Okay.
So this helps to mitigate some of that.
Exactly. Right.
All right.
And so.
Do you need to share?
My name is Paul Williamson, and I'm a senior developer at Key Capture Energy. And Laura, I mean, my colleague, who's a developer at Key Capture Energy, as well as a project lead, and she'll be taking you through the basics of the project.
Did you stop and try to?
I can actually probably. That's me, I thought I might be able to boot you up. No luck.
And if this doesn't work, what do you guys have in front of you? That's exactly what we're, I'll put on the screen, so.
So she started, it should work. What is it? Working out? There we go. I think it's stuck.
I just, I think it's not enough, unfortunately, but I can, I can meet you and try to reconnect as we talk. Is it the same thing that I have?
It's largely the same, but truncated.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah. So we are, we are Key Catch Energy. We are based out of Albany, New York, Houston, Texas. We also have offices in N Y C. We are developer of battery and B storage systems, and we own and operate them for the entire life. So we, we develop, we own, we operate. We're proposing a flat megawatt battery energy storage project on a piece of property owned by the Doyle family between along the Wellington Stafford Town Lines. We are currently one of the largest operators of battery energy storage in New York and Texas with about four megawatts operating systems. And you can see on, on the map on the second page, we have proposing this project and we're proposing proposing four other similar projects Let's just go, go ahead. If you want to email to me, but otherwise. Um, so, so I think I have, who we are as a company, really energy storage, the whole benefits are. First of all, we can defer upgrades that every source has to complete. Basically, we provide a solution to prevent them from having to build out new transmission or distribution infrastructure or expand substations. We support greater penetration, penetration of renewable energy, given that renewable energy like when solar is interim generation. We can, and we can also help service load during peak times as well. So for example, five PM in the summer, a hot summer day, solar stopped producing as much, but everyone's going to turn on their air conditioning, we can discharge energy during that time and therefore suppress energy prices across the region electrical grid. So our battery energy storage systems are, basically, they're each made up of cells about the size of maybe a briefcase. And then those are broken out into larger modules, which are then broken out into racks. And we have dedicated management system that monitors critical information like state of charge, voltage and temperature across those different cells individually in real time. And they're reported to a larger data system that gathers all of that information, make sure that the systems are functioning properly and effectively.
So when you kind of envision this thing, it's not just one big huge battery, it's a container that's full of racks of smaller batteries that are all interconnected and.
I hope we could chunk the land with this.
This is going to sit on in just over a half an acre. So you want to kind of keep going forward. If you look at the maps, this. Here's the property, the town line running between Stafford and Wellington, right here. So this would be approximately half an acre back in here where the project would be located. And then we'd have an access road. This, this image is a little bit old, we've actually changed the access road so that's entirely in the tennis effort of becoming straight out right here. Partly because the landowner here wants us to avoid their cornfield and continue to have the plant in the cornfield.
So we're just tied back into the grid.
So our tie line comes down the hill, this, this is all pretty slow area. Connect over here. Originally, there's a small substation here that Blair.
Substation.
For those of you who aren't keeping up with me, there, there's a substation there. Every source is just continuing that substation, so instead of connecting there, working directly into the roadside line. And so it'll just be a simple direct path to the roadside line. Very straightforward, simple project. Sort of. Sorry, the slope for that. Yeah, so when you kind of look at that area, you know, far your mountain, right? This being east, that being west. Everything from the west of the property over down is a pretty steep slope, and that's going down towards the river, which is kind of located over in this general area. Yeah. And then we're still up on the upper plain, the flat area that is more associated with the local river.
So the question is, has there been any electrical interference from any of your facilities insofar as affecting cell phone, reception on TVs, you know, kind of the same questions that people have with cell tower.
Right.
Coming in.
Or wind turbine.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So we do operate units now in, in Texas and in New York. We don't have any operating in Connecticut yet. But these, these projects do not have a large amount of electromagnetic frequency interference. That's largely because it's a consolidated concentrated area. It's not up on a top tower. It's not creating, you know, wind turbine would create a lot of those because of the spinning blades that interrupt radio waves. A cell phone tower is actually emitting signals on purpose. So there is electromagnetic frequency that are down associated with the project, but it's all consolidated within that fence line area and that one small power line that goes down to the, to the source. The power line from the project to the point of interconnection is a 23 KV power line, same size as what's going alongside the road. And so, you know, it's, you're not talking about high tension, high amounts of voltage that are coming from the project. All very similar to what is already existing in your neighborhood.
There's a good.
So this is very close to the Stafford line over there.
It is.
Avenue.
Yes, and as I said, the, the access road would primarily be on the Stafford side of the property. And then right before you get to the project, the, the road turns to south, crosses the town line into the town of Wellington. And so the project itself would be in the town of Wellington.
Yeah, there's, there's starting to be more chatter, low key chatter at this point, about what are we going to do with this energy that's generated during the day? How will we want to utilize that over a 24 hour period?
Right. So as Laura was pointing out, you know, a lot of the new generation that's coming online is intermittent, and it's not always matching with the uses. In addition to that, and besides new generation that's coming online, even if you look at existing generation throughout, when you have what's referred to as a Pico plant. I'll look you there.
I just want to.
A bigger plant is a, it's a facility where you have, usually it's natural gas, and it's just there so they can come online very quickly to help provide quick generation when there's suddenly a high demand. One of the things that a unit like this does, it will help shave off those peaks just for several hours. It can go ahead and inject energy into the grid, and therefore you don't need to bring on this bigger plant that's just going to burn gas for a couple of hours unnecessarily. And it's using electricity that was stored up at other times during the day.
This is a very good representation of what this actually looks like, what this system actually looks like. So this system at the end of the lake will have 12 containers that are basically look like chicken containers. They're going to be 30 feet long by eight and a half feet high and four and a half feet wide. And they're clustered together in basically three groups of four. So we'll have all of those and then we'll have two inverters that convert the energy from AC to DC. And we'll have, we'll have a control house and a switch here and an auxiliary skin to help bring the energy off the grid appropriately. But that's it, there's the 12 containers, there's five, there's small pieces of equipment. It's all surrounded by a fence line, all on a gravel pad, so it's semi-pervious in terms of stormwater impact.
What's the frequency of maintenance on the site? How often is it required?
Once every several months, there'll be a couple of guys who come with a pickup truck.
Okay, does it have a fence around it to keep people out and so forth? Any kind of security around it to keep people from?
Chain link fence. Motion activated lighting and security. Security camera, so. This facility is operated remotely, and so 24/7, there's a team that's watching the output of the facility and monitoring all systems. The remote operation has automatic alarms, but it also has a human backup applied to as well.
What's the average longevity of the equipment?
20 years. So the equipment and all pieces don't last 20 years. Actually, Laura can explain. Do augmentation, so you start with the, the set of batteries, they'll degrade over time, but then you come in and beef them up if you want to expand it all.
But yeah, it's basically just, so the batteries themselves last, the reach is a certain point, I think it's about 60% of the original battery life, where they're really just not functioning anymore. So we're, we're originally to start out with, I believe, in 10 batteries and then at maybe like year eight, year 12, we bring in one new battery. And we basically just, we don't ever take anything out, we only bring new batteries in, and those just continue to supplement the others and build them. And those just continue to supplement the others and build them up. Until we eventually reach about 20 years, which is the point at which that crop of batteries is pretty much, it's pretty much reached, reached its end of its useful life. So we do have a, we have a lease agreement with the, with Donna and the owner of the property with, for a base lease agreement of 20 years. And then two five year extensions, if we determine that. This will continue to be a fruitful site and we can go in and install new batteries. So if you got a new augmentation schedule, we might exercise that, but a maximum is 30 years. It's a sizable piece of property. Would you be looking to expand this or are you going to keep it confined to?
So at this time, this is really the plan, the project that we're planning on. It's largely aligned to the size of the project is aligned with the capacity that's available in the power lines that are at that space. The amount of infrastructure that every source has. We couldn't, right now, if we wanted to, we couldn't go any bigger and there wouldn't be, we'd have to upgrade all of the size of the wires. If at any point something in the future changes and we wanted to do a larger project there, we'd have to start back at square one. Through two major processes. One is the interconnection process. Go back through the interconnection process to get approved for doing a larger project. So, you know, if we went from five megawatts to eight megawatts, extra three megawatts a project. Would be considered a brand new project on the interconnection study part of it. Then also on the state permitting side of it, we'd have to go through square one, just like permitting a brand new project all over again. We can't simply decide that we're going to make a larger project because we've got the front space.
Is there any, um, what do you do for fire suppression if something happens in these containers?
Yeah. So we don't do fire suppression. The, the systems really aren't needed. They don't need fire suppression. There's been different systems that have been explored in the past and really the best thing that, that can happen with these. Is we'll do direct training with the fire department. If with the, the remote operating system that I mentioned. If anything triggers that something is out of line, not functioning properly, then that part of the system will automatically get shut down. But the entire system has to come offline. It would, if there's an overheat sensed, the fire department would be called in. Fire department, we're working directly with our team and receive training from our team. And our typical guidance for the fire department is to control and contain. And so allow that portion of the, the battery that's overheating, if there is any kind of fire or overheat, let it burn itself out. And control so that there's no spread of fire to any other apparatus in the area, brush trees or anything else.
Are there access points to extinguish the fire from the fire department? Like, like the problems you have with a battery powered car?
Yeah, no, actually, because we don't want the fire department to go in and access it. So one of the worst things that you can do if you're starting to have an overheat situation is open up the doors and lock oxygen, get in there. And so again, and there'll be real specific training with the fire department on this. Fire department would show up, they would, um, they would secure the site, stay outside of the fence line. And make sure that surrounding areas are kept cool. So that there's no chance that a fire could spread. If there is a fire in one of the particular containers, let that particular container burn itself out.
There's been conversations for past several years with the electric grid insofar as hardening it. So it's not susceptible. Wonder if you could touch on that, what your thoughts are about that.
You are getting the grid so that it's.
Because of sabotage.
Oh, I see what you mean. Yeah.
There's been several shootings and then.
Right. Attacking of substations and things like that. Yeah. Um, you know, there's a limit to, to really what you can do unless you become somewhat over insured, if you will, or over securitized. You know, unless you're going to put somebody at, at every substation, every solar project, every battery project, which really isn't viable. But again, these systems have full sensors and then so that if somebody did show up and decide that they were going to shoot their gun into one of the containers. It would show up in our sensor immediately that there's something wrong and we would respond to it. So, and, and if needed, that portion of the project would be shut offline or the entire project would be cut offline. So one of the things now, just to kind of talk more globally, one of the things that the battery projects, as we go further, you know, in our, in our. Electrical system, then planning for the electrical system. Battery projects located throughout, throughout the state provide distributed generation rather than having it all centered in one place. Thereby, if you have breakdown of systems in other portions of the state, that necessarily, you know, you can isolate it so that that doesn't affect everybody. And having a little bit of backup power in designated areas can help with some of that, that reinforcement of the lines.
Yeah. No, it's just something we touched on.
Where is your, your remote surveillance based? Is it New England?
Do you?
Currently do some New Jersey. Yeah. It's, that's, that's where current projects, I might change for this project, but. And then we also will, as we flesh out this portfolio of connected projects, we also will have someone based out of, if not larger New England, then based out of Connecticut to maintain these projects. Because we'll have, hopefully by the end of the decade, well, these five and then another three others across the state.
Do you have a plan for decommissioning at the end of life?
Yes, we do. So there's a fully commissioning plan. That's actually part of the, the permanent application to the, to the Connecticut Siding Council. Then basically, you know, if, when and if the project is decided to come offline. We would go in and take it apart. Almost the exact opposite is you put it together. Most of the materials that are used on site come in modular. So all the containers and everything are modularized, come in, we'd remove all of those. And then we remove everything up to two feet below ground level. And so if there's conduit or electrical wires are greater than two feet below, it would be a decision on whether or not to just let that sit there. If anything like that is left behind, both ends are entirely cut off and it's just inert, you know, copper that's sitting there in the ground. In most cases, you know, battery energy is a little bit new, but in most cases. What I've seen working in the renewable energy and both the wind and the solar fields. With current, current. Material values, they'll pull all of the, the wiring out of the ground anyhow, because it's, it's more valuable to pull aluminum or, or copper than it is leave it underground.
Yeah, I was going to say, wouldn't 25 years from now, the price of copper, you're probably going to pull everything up.
Yeah.
So where are the battery modules being manufactured?
Currently in China. That's the industry standard.
There is, you know, part, part of new federal legislation is supporting the development of manufacturing in the United States. But we can't promise you that that's going to be ready in time for these projects and where, where that, this is, that, that's where this is going to come from. So.
What do you see for your level of disturbance for the tying route down to main line? How far are you going to clear cut in order to get your overhead lines to attach?
Approximately 75 feet wide. So that, that blue path that you see in there is going to be approximately 75 feet wide. And so that would be a pathway of 75 feet wide. There'd be some selective cutting. If there was a specific tree that looked like it was at risk. When them's coming over that, that we might, but usually speaking, by creating about 35 feet on either side of the line. That creates enough buffer so that the line is relatively secure in most water type of that.
And there's a, a 50 foot buffer around the product fence line plus another 50 feet for slack. So one other, one of the things I noticed as well is that these do produce noise. They sound like, kind of almost like a cicada, like a blowhole on here from the substation, just kind of like a blowhole in the background. Since in one of the images that I passed along, but this actually just happened today. We just got our updated sound modeling results from our consultant. And we are at a state standard of 51 decibels. We're considered an industrial use to a residential use is all around the property. Which is a 51 DVA limit. We're below that limit at all the property boundaries in Wellington. And really well below that limit considering we're in the middle of the, of the forest and kind of out by ourselves. But actually because we're so close to the Stafford town line, there are two properties that we're actually a little over the limit for. I think we're at like 16. So one, one of the properties is the property that is owned by the Doyle family. The access road is coming in on. And the second property is owned by another individual in Stafford. And I believe at that point we're maybe 54 DVA, 54 DVA on the property line. So three DVA of the standard. And that's something that we met with the town officials from the town of Stafford, we spoke with them about. And we're attempting to reach out to individual Jason Ziger who lives there and just make sure that. We have no conflicts with the town and with the individual who lives there. And just make sure that we, I guess, had that, that cleared before we spent this permit application in state. It's, it's really just, it's a stretch of woods in the far back of the property, shouldn't disturb anyone. And really all the residences around on all sides, the Stafford side and south of the Wellington side. It's getting down dramatically more to like 45 to 40 DVA by the time it hits them, because we really are pretty far out of what's there. Do you know if there's any impact to wildlife, like deer or bear, is there, they're around here? Is there any studies on that?
None, none that's been directly studied. I can tell you that, you know, one of the impacts that has happened with. Like types of projects and the larger, the most applicable one being a solar project. Is the fence line itself can sometimes obstruct the travel way that's used by deer or moose. But this fence line is a, you know, relatively small compared to a, two or 300 acre fence line that goes around a large solar project. So that's, that's the biggest disruption that those types of projects have had on, on that type of wildlife.
We did also go through and this project, this parcel is not within an NDB review area. So we went through the state level permitting process and there are no, no flags.
Natural diversity database is the, the state's database on, on whether or not there's protected species within the area.
So no flags on that. Fox turtles, plants and anything like that will come to them. I didn't want like all bearish were just going to come, you know, infiltrating the neighborhoods because I can't stand battery.
No, we put honeybees in there.
Are there any further questions? Joe, John, you all said?
I'll sit here.
I'll sit here.
We lost the sound.
All through the Connecticut Siding Council.
All right. Thank you.
And if anybody has any questions, feel free to share contact information outside the end of that presentation.
Thank you. Item four, outdoor dining regulations.
So we have touched on this a couple of different times. There were a number of changes. Post 2021 legislative session, one of them is that towns are required to allow. Temporary seasonal outdoor dining by right. When it is accessory to a bona fide food services staff. So this does not include like something that would be just a bar. It doesn't give them permission to serve alcohol outside or anything along those lines. It's perfect. It is purely a permanent extension of the outdoor dining executive orders that we had for three years. So in response to that. We have about five places in town that are utilizing some type of outdoor dining space that really wasn't. Originally included within their approvals or in the building construction. So I put together some language as a starting point. Ultimately, this would be a text amendment. We'd have to go through the whole process, but basically would require. So again, it has to be by right, which means we can't require a public hearing or a special permit process. So the way to, to address that is to identify all the criteria within the standards so that they have to meet everything. So this is kind of the general consensus of language that you'll see across most communities. That they have to prepare some type of site plan showing the location, floor plan and layout of the outdoor area. So that speaks to fire marshal. And egress issues, the number of tables. So we can determine if, you know, they're going to add 150 tables and have a little tiny site.
So what's that due to the parking?
Right. Exactly. That would be what, that would be why we would ask for this. What we generally see is that restaurants now don't have the capacity to serve their indoor space and their outdoor space. So if they're running, if they're running an outdoor patio or outdoor dining area, they generally can't seek the restaurant at capacity because they can't feed that many people. So like when Hilltop expanded their outdoor area, they, they have a portion of the restaurant which they won't see. There's a lot of places that do outdoor or indoor. So that would be one of the things that we would look at, the location of English, Negroes, pedestrians and vehicles. We want to see narrative for how they're going to deal with the outdoor area, how they're going to deal with litter, hours of operation. And then they'll need to have that discussion. With Eastern Highlands, because obviously food service outside, they need to know, fire marshal, again, egress. Same thing with building official. If there's a tent, that needs to be reviewed by those, those departments. And then I put it in here because it might be applicable depending, but DOT, if there are any state right of ways, because we've got a lot of state roads here. It would be accessory to a bona fide lawfully existing restaurant. So it could not be like, we have three seats inside and 150 outside. It has to remain accessory to the restaurant use. So this is sort of the baseline criteria. We can workshop it, but I just wanted to start somewhere to get your thoughts and.
So how do we consider like impact on neighbors and so forth?
I guess I'd have to figure out what. What, what the worry or, or what we would want to be.
Noise.
From people sitting outside, you mean?
Yeah, it's actually pretty loud when you've got a pile of people.
Have there been any lines?
None. No, not, none that have come to our.
Is the only one that sees anybody outside right now, any magnet to his hilltops.
We, we have Hilltop, we have a little bit of Wellington Pizza. Maybe go. Yeah. So. I had to think about that. It would happen, because it's by right, it has to be basically a yes, no type of question. So if, if there's a, there's got to be a criteria that they have to be able to clearly understand and meet or not meet. Can't attach any type of special condition. Or performance standard that would be subjective based upon the application. So that's just think about how we might.
Would you do something like trespass, right?
Well, we wouldn't really. Unless there was some specific issue related to like egress, we wouldn't want them to be installing any lights because it's temporary. So the idea would be on a seasonal basis, they have this, but like Wellington Pizza, for example, they, they have that tent area which they remove. So we really wouldn't want any permanent fixtures to be installed because we want that to be able to. Be removed when it's not being used. If it was a permanent expansion with a patio or a deck or something like that, they want to use all the time. Then we would run that through the traditional approval process with you guys.
So so far as parking, can you say if the restaurant has seating for 120 people? And they have an outside area. That could seat. I don't know, 75 people. We come to terms with. The amount of parking available. Is there something that we can draw insofar as saying, okay, you have seating in the restaurant for 120? You can't have, if you have an outdoor dining also, you can't have anything over 15%. Over that hundred and. 20 that you're already able to serve with the idea that they're going to close part of that off.
Or I struggle with the restaurant was designed for, say, your example, 120 people or 125 people. Parking was laid out for that amount of occupancy. So how do we add a bunch more seats and make sure, you know, that they're not all over the road, they're not like, you know, up and down a street, it's.
Not even water usage, plumbing and everything else. Just really doubling the capacity of the restaurant, theory.
Well, that would be all for the public health side to determine.
Well, that would be all for the public health side to determine and verify. So that part we want to have, we have covered because they're gonna, they're gonna look at that. They have to be able to demonstrate that they can execute the service of that food properly and meet all the temperatures and the capacity, and they've got to deal with all of that. So it's it's not quite as simple as them just adding a bunch of tables. They still would have to meet all those same public health code requirements.
It very well could be that their overall capacity remains the same. They just have outdoor seating, like you were saying, they closed down part of the inside.
And.
I would think the size of the parking lot would almost dictate how many people can go have dinner, right?
Well, how do we deal with that with folks? Because we've got multiple operators that currently have outdoor seating and they have a couple of tables. Yeah. But on a building basis, land parking, that's a part that gets a little bit trickier.
That's not gonna be a pleasant place to sit up for us.
No, but 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 we've had. Let let me see how we might deal with it.
Here's my other question. Say somebody parks a food truck on a piece of property, he's then established a restaurant.
No.
And they want to put like a tent around it. Okay.
No, it would not. They would, a food truck does not qualify as a bona fide food establishment. I don't even think we would allow, I'm not even sure how ours would deal with that.
Willa Manic parking them in lots now and setting them up all around it with utilities and everything right near where I work, right on the corner there, right after the highway ramp. On the corner of Jappella Road.
Stafford is that one on one ninety.
Never say no.
Yeah, yeah, true.
So right now, regulation first, they first said it's supposed to be primarily customers seated at tables or counters within an enclosed building. So that would have to change, correct?
Well, that would be accessory to that. So the the section that I'm proposing here would be under seven dot ten falls under. Yeah, it falls under accessory uses.
Yeah.
I, what I'm wondering is if it would be. I'm trying, I'm reading through some of the language. I don't know if we could ask them if it's temporary and seasonal and the idea is they they get rid of it every year. If there's a way for us to just issue them an administrative permit like on a seasonal basis. So if there's a problem, they don't get it again the following year. Because a lot of it is based upon the operation, not necessarily the site. So one site that's a thousand square feet with twenty tables, it might work, and another site with the same parameter, it might not. So I'm trying to figure out is, are we gonna be able to build all these criteria into a regulation? Or is there some way to create a process by which they don't get to reestablish that same operation the next year if we document certain issues?
Like we would have to review it essentially, you know, see what they're proposing for size of outdoor space and how much parking it would potentially consume.
Yeah.
I think in most cases, patrons go and they prefer, they choose to sit outside in good weather. So I I don't think that very often they're gonna fill the restaurant and fill the outdoor space. There's, there's a give and take there.
I remember during the COVID, like you go to like the brewing company in Willa Manic, they had all these tables set up in Roasting Park and a lot of them come from Sun's miserable experience.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, I don't see people laughing for that now, but yeah, there'd have to be a real comfortable area to sit under, you know, where you can enjoy your what's all hastily put together things to keep the businesses, you know, up and running.
But you still have to consider the size of the parking lot, the size of the outdoor. Is there some way that we can throttle that? If you have outdoor, they have to close down a certain portion of the interior seating so that they don't exceed their, I don't know, a hundred and twenty, you know?
Shouldn't there be some sort of language in here about not exceeding like whatever the
the.
Whatever the capacity of a restaurant is.
Well, the the problem with that is it's a changing number, right? I mean, swapping out booths, tables or or just changing the configuration will change the.
Isn't that much though? It's a building. You can only put so many people in it, right?
But it's based upon floor plan, size of doors.
There's footage too, right? You can only.
Yeah, the occupancy will determine that, but but for example.
Like this room here, you could rearrange this furniture five hundred different ways, but the room could only hold so many people physically.
But but like changing that door from one to two will increase the capacity. And so we don't really back into the regs from that perspective. We we do it from a use perspective based on gross square foot. But what I'm thinking rather than, because again, we have five now. I don't know, we'll ever have more than five. I don't think we've had any issues with five that we've had. But I I'm thinking that maybe there's a way to correlate it to suggest that that the outdoor dining area not exceed a specific percentage of the total restaurant capacity. So that could be ten percent, could be eighty percent. We could figure out what that is. I might be able to get a floor planner to figure out what we're dealing with. But that may be one way to do it. So if they're they're shutting off twenty-five percent of their capacity inside, then it should be a wash from a patron's perspective at least.
We'll have to go down to Bill Propp and come to Texas.
There you go. Let me, let me, I let me think a little bit about that and sharpen this a little bit, come back to you with some thoughts.
We don't speak about parking in the special regs eleven twelve or in the special regulations for restaurants.
It's a separate.
It's great. Where is that? Where is our parking dens and stuff? It's, I know we looked at it in the past, but I haven't looked at it all, but.
Yep, it is in, I think it's called. All Street Parking and Loading is section eighteen. So there's tweet to. So for example, in restaurant two would be one space per three table seats plus one space per two counter or bar seats. So as long as they're shutting off inside, whatever they're adding outside from a parking perspective, the the seats are equal, then there won't be any change in the demand here. But let me, so we have the parking issue dealing with potentially noise and overall capacity. And then this idea of are they truly temporary or is it a permanent? Let me, let me get some info on that and come back to you with some.
All right, suggestion. That's good, a good first.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good first swipe of this.
Curious if those, like the Eastern Highland regs kind of limiting, self, self-limiting in its own way.
Well, you gotta look at like everything, the road control.
Yeah, right. Maybe the parking is almost in an outdoor dining, you have food laying on the ground. Maybe parking is less of a problem than water and trash.
Sure, the seagulls take care of it. Yeah, that's true. All right, the discussion. All right, no unfinished business. I have G approval of minutes, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I wasn't at this meeting, I have to abstain.
Anybody have any changes they'd like to say?
I don't remember.
That was. I'll come back to you, Bob. Okay, so I want to abstain.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes of April eighteenth.
I'll second that.
Yeah, any discussion? All in favor? Hi, okay. Brings us to the meetings of May, minutes of May second. Basically, everyone.
I'll abstain. I wasn't at that meeting.
Yeah, I see that. Okay, thank you, Joe.
Make a motion to approve minutes of May second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
And each correspondence. The R C O G comment letters.
Yeah, so I posted with the information, but didn't print out because there's a ton of pages and not much to them. You know, we get copied on any referrals and texts and then if they go to Crog, that are from a Crog town, we get copied on. There's really not much or anything that's actionable. The only thing that I I guess I've mentioned from nearby, only because I'm obviously dealing with it, is so Ashford dealt with a similar application. It was a text amendment to ultimately support warehouse application. How's that going? Permission denied it.
Yeah.
Shot. In response to that a resident on behalf of multiple residents, I believe, submitted an application requesting a temporary moratorium, so not altogether different than what we saw here. So we're going through the process. We'll open the public hearing at the next meeting later in June for a temporary moratorium on warehouse distribution, research, basically the uses that would be available in that zone. Something that's sort of pertinent, I would call it a correspondence by a documentation on it. We're obviously in peak legislative session and I was informed yesterday that section one eighty-two, which was tacked on to the Budget Implementor Bill basically mandates that any town of less than eight thousand people it prohibits a planning and zoning commission from allowing a use approving a, an application or otherwise allowing a warehouse or distribution facility in excess of a hundred thousand square feet from being located in the town unless it is on a property that is of greater than a hundred and fifty acres that also has less than five acres of wetlands and is more than two miles from an elementary school. This was proposed in response, from what we can tell, to the a big warehouse fight that's going on in the very early development of the Timex property. I heard about an hour ago that there was some backlash for some some towns in northern Connecticut somewhere. And they changed it to read, from what I'm hearing but haven't seen, that would apply to towns between six and eight thousand people. Because that's where this one town falls, but the towns that really did not want this legislation were less than six. So if that amendment was passed, then it wouldn't apply. But otherwise, as written, it would effectively terminate any warehouse and distribution facility from ever coming here. The weird part about it is that it includes use, and so there's a lot of concern that they're effectively at the state level making someone like FedEx forever non-conformant. So there's been a lot of backlash and it's really upended a lot of things. So I'm not sure where it will land, but it may take any discussion of the S D Z and turn it on its head because that use comes right off the table. It's effectively three percent of the property. And I don't know if there's a property in town that has less than three percent. So that's in the budget. We eight hundred pages. So I haven't seen the final language yet, but I'll keep you posted on.
All right.
That's all I got.
Interesting. All right. Brings us to item I, public participation for items not listed on the agenda. Anyone online? Any public participation tonight? If not excited. All right. Item J, staff report discussion. EDC strategic plan. I'm assuming that's why Mr. Clark.
I am, I am here to answer any questions while Mike can introduce it and he has a color commentary.
I I believe I've been keeping you up to date on kind of how things have progressed, but so the EDC sought and obtained ARPA funds to develop a strategic plan. And in in ten words or less, really, at least what I'm thinking of it as is is sort of a marrying of an evaluation of sort of the fiscal and financial status and future of the town, but also on the development perspective. So it's gonna try to evaluate.
So how does it lay in with our P O C D?
Right, so the the problem that all P O C D documents have, and Wellington included, is that they are really a blue sky document. We have some workshops, people show up on Saturday or at night and they say, I want to preserve open space. So we have a chapter about preserving open space and they say we want economic development, so there's a chapter on economic development. But it doesn't really ask people to take a specific stance on a thing. And so what this plan will hopefully give us is a sort of a Goldilocks approach to, if you do nothing, if you develop the heck out of everything or you take something down the middle, this is what it might look like in ten years. To try to build consensus around an actual viable, potentially supported by the market, right? We can all get behind coffee shops and cafes. But the market isn't bringing coffee shops and cafes. So what we want to do is get an understanding of what the market is supportive of, determine if the community is also in support of those things, and figure out how to align the regulations so that we can facilitate where that consensus, where that overlap is.
I'll also say that's on the back, my key word consensus, with a backdrop of, let's look at where we are as a town, where our grant list is projected forward. Let's look at our needs, what our budget looks like and project it forward. Let's look at our tax rates and what we can expect to be able to pay for and project it forward. And then look at how much development we need in order to meet all of our needs. We have four different, three different lines. Now, to the, to bring them all together, what does the future look like for our town? And then bring people together banking zoning or selection or finance, economic development, and try and come to consensus in a workshop on the path forward, that meets our needs from a development standpoint, a revenue standpoint, a conservation standpoint, all, all and try and bring it together so that we have a path forward. Does that make sense to what I'm saying?
That does make sense. It makes more sense to me than like, you know, just going for something like, you know, like what happened one last summer and and then, you know, it gets shot down after a lot of effort and so forth.
And also.
And it was clear, clear how the town felt about that particular.
And consensus about about what we need, what's acceptable, what's not acceptable. That kind of thing probably won't get a start. So on the one hand, you know, we have needs. On the other hand, we have revenue and we have to try somewhere to bring them together and something that makes sense, and then people will buy. They'll feel good about. So that's, that's the goal, and it requires consensus building and it requires data and information. And then presenting that and then trying to, you know, give and take and give and take so that we can come to something that makes sense. So we don't end in a situation where we fix and starts, or we're just arguing with each other. I want, you know, lower taxes. Well, we talked about this. You know, you have needs here. I mean, you know, your budget, you have this, you have, okay, you know, I don't want any development. Well, wait a minute, we talked about this. You can have some development. I mean, you know, none. Not everybody can afford that. So hopefully we'll be able to come to some consensus, looking at all, all the data and the different trend lines. Is that, Mike, is that a good summary of?
Yeah, yeah, I think it, it, it gives us the data to determine how we want to get there, right? We're getting five thousand bucks for a house when we get built, and if there's a kid in school, that's, there's a cost there. Dollar General, right, that was the last, well, truck stops have been an anomaly, the Dollar General, they're paying about twenty-five thousand dollars a year in taxes. And that is, that is basically, I don't even know how you'd measure that on the, on the grand list or with the town budget, it's not a lot, right? So we, we have to figure out based upon those, those trend lines, what the grand list growth would need to be to, to keep Wellington.
What's Lovesworth in tax revenue a year?
Uh, that went on, the, the value of that building is just south of ten million, I think, about eight million dollars, and they I don't know if they'll hit the grand list for this year at, let me see, full capacity. Yeah. Because they were being taxed at their, sort of at their fraction before, which was like ten or eleven grand. But that was a pretty substantial increase to the grand list.
Hopefully in the dead air, I mean, we have, we have debt ex, which I believe is six or seven hundred thousand, no, five hundred thousand, right? Five hundred thousand. So, and what's our budget, seventeen million, I think?
There about.
Something like that? Okay, so how do we move forward if we meet our needs, our projected needs, both from a increased number of houses standpoint and increased taxation standpoint, and from a development standpoint, there's something that people will buy, and if they want, if they agree with. That's, that's the goal.
When do you think you guys are gonna have something ready to? When do you think you guys are gonna have something to talk about with your strategic plan?
So, right now, we're, we're, we finalized, in our last meeting, we finalized our, our R S P. And we're in the process of identifying potential suppliers and posting. There'll be a month and a half, or so I think, a month and a month and a half of, of posting time or resplatting by time. Then we'll be a, a month, a month and a half, or two months of evaluation, slow, I'm in the private sector, I know it's slow, but and then it'll be working forward from there. There'll also be work done by the E D C, not consultant. Outreach, outreach to current businesses in, in Wellington. We'll be working with our own internal people here at the Town Office Building on financial projections, doing stuff like that.
Did you guys?
Your question, right?
Yeah, yeah, so you guys gonna have more members?
Uh, right now, we have four, uh, four members. And I don't, I mean, we're, we're trying to outreach to a total of about forty or fifty businesses in Wellington. And hopefully, we will spark some interest in, in increasing our membership on E D C, I think we're open for, what, two more positions, like, two more positions, the seats.
Okay. The, the real estate in the building for, for Loves is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
It's significant.
So there's some personal property and some other stuff in the equipment inside.
Yeah.
So it's about eight and a half million, if they're paying on five point nine million, which is about a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year.
It's significant.
When you consider the size, right, the comparison between that building and FedEx, and the square footage of the building and the proportion.
Takes a lot of coffee shops to. That's the problem. That's the problem.
As, as part of the E D C plan, there will be a time when you'd ask the planning and zoning commission possibly to provide a volunteer to work with us, a week or two, maybe two meetings, as part of that consensus building process. Hopefully, one of the members could, could step up in that, I don't know.
Okay. Tom, thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
I think this is a better approach, you know, to have these discussions ahead of time, rather than like, any kind of surprises.
Because less reaction, or?
Yeah.
Well, I think it's, it helps to open everyone's eyes to what's, what's possible in town. You know, people have ideas of what they'd like, what, what, what's possible.
Somebody's gonna wanna do it, spend the money on it, invest, you know, it's gonna be accepted by the people of the town, especially if it's anything of any magnitude.
We also have landowners in there. Yeah, of course, we don't, you can make all those plans in the world, but if people don't wanna sell their property, it's not really gonna make much difference.
Well, as we saw, there's property available. Yeah, right, right, but you know, the use has to be.
And then there's the land itself.
I'm really curious about, what are the backers gonna do, they don't have any heirs?
It's gonna happen. When all that back of property starts going on the market, the largest landowner in town, and they have no heirs.
Unless they end up like Desiato, selling it all, you know.
Property everywhere.
All right. Brings us to item K. It is.
Don't inform, I just wanna make sure I understand. Planning and zoning has absolutely no jurisdiction or influence or anything over Siding Council, so these people are doing the batteries, this was information courtesy. Doesn't matter, no matter what anyone asks us about it, say, yep, it's going in, there's information available.
There is certainly.
It's exciting as hell, though.
There certainly is a process by which people can participate on a more formal level at the state.
Yes.
Because they, they are falling under that, just like us, effectively a solar farm, they, there is no local jurisdiction.
I think, though, doesn't the Siding Council have public hearings?
Yes.
Say, for, for reach application as well, so that, that, so if anyone asks, we could say, go to the Siding Council website, find out when that public hearing is, that's your chance to say, there'd be no opportunity to speak with this venue.
And if the town overall had a very strong opinion about it, and wanted, you know, if the commission wanted to provide correspondent of town, whatever.
You got to do that.
Yep, so the process is still public, it's just not.
Just not here, right, that's just.
And the one thing that they didn't mention, it's, it's a coup, gonna be a couple of years.
Yeah, it's in their plan, how long it is, it goes out, if it won't be available, it's the online until two thousand twenty-six.
Yeah.
But I can hear the chatter, how come we weren't informed about this?
Which is why I wanted them to come in first.
I know, I like that.
I didn't want somebody to, to say, did you know about this? And have it be sort of backing into that, so I wanted it to be out front and to have the presentation so that it would be part of the minutes and posted online.
There'll be more of those things going up all around until they come up with something better.
Well, one of the things that's coming up now is with solar arrays, and the latest kind of wrinkle is, people are saying, boy, you're putting the solar arrays in, we need to address open space when they go to put one of these arrays in, it can't cover the whole site, we should have a certain amount of quote unquote open space left. And it's like any other build out, so I'm sure that that's gonna be, you know.
Nothing's environmentally neutral, is it?
No, it's always something. I was kinda surprised they didn't have solar panels on top of all those containers in the pictures, it would seem almost logical.
Yeah, let's get in serious talk again, we, we make cable where I work for nuclear.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the nuclear.
Oh, well, I like.
More talk again.
Actually, Mike, we're making micro-nuclear reactors.
Small footprint.
Three hundred milli-. Three hundred megawatt reactors.
Has to be.
Talk Anthony Cool. Plants, sites.
Yeah.
And they fit.
And, yeah, they'll fit.
Those are a little bit bigger than the ones that Russia just left here, they're everywhere over the countryside.
They just did those little concerns, I guess they blow it down.
Yeah.
Ukraine has the largest plants in the world.
Yeah, there's a former Soviet. All right.
We all set?
All right, it is eight forty-nine P M, meeting adjourned, thanks, everybody.